The time being 5:00 PM. I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole meeting for the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board for Wednesday, April 30th, 2025. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Elper. Commissioner Forney.
Here.
Commissioner Menz.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Commissioner Rucker.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson. Vice President Musich.
Present.
President Abani.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. And I know Commissioner Olson is here, he might have just stepped away briefly, so. The agenda is before us. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Can I vote?
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. The only business we're conducting tonight is to basically receive information about our budget, and so with that, I will turn things over to our Superintendent, Superintendent Albangura.
Okay. Thank you, President Abani and Commissioners. Welcome, everybody here today. This is a good day, and we will start off by kind of giving you some background here about what we are doing today as far as our budget for this year, for 2026, I'm sorry. And I look forward to, well, first let me say this. I want to just gratitude towards the staff here today to all the people sitting in this room who are just dedicated and really amazing people that have done really great work and supporting of this. And as we go through this process, my value, my appreciation to everyone sitting behind us today is very important. So I wanted just to say thank you to all of them that are here. With that, let's jump into our Committee of the Whole Budget Retreat. So today, we're going to start with the supplemental budget development that we're going to talk about. So the adopted 2026 budget plan serves really as the foundation for this year's supplemental budget process. And just so you all know, as a board, we have already begun updating financial projections for property tax pressures that are on this park board, economic conditions, also to account for new cost pressures that are facing the organization. And understanding and giving these additional pressures, no, I've been very clear with the organization, with the staff, that no new departmental budget requests will be considered this year. So we are staying with no requests. And also to remind the board that this is the final year of the 2023-2026 strategic directions, making this really critical to align remaining efforts and also available resources, especially in the year with the potential significant cuts that we're facing this year and this budget. So day one of our budget retreat, the goal is today's sessions is to establish a really a clear base for ongoing budget conversations with this board and with us as an organization. The primary focus includes the general fund, property tax impacts, budget issues, and needs of the organization. We will reflect on the strategic and intentional growth of the NPRB since the Great Recession to ground ourselves in the valuable services we provide for our community, which we see every day in our parks. And finally, we will have a dedicated revenue discussion at the end of today to brainstorm and explore possible ways to decrease the NPRB's resilience on property tax. So that'll be the last half hour of this, of today's meeting. In the budget retreat, day two, we'll focus on other funds and board priorities for this board. We'll spend time providing overviews on the NPRB funds. We'll work with, we'll work to identify the board's revenue and budget priorities with the many challenges we are facing in this budget, and we will gather and obtain board input to help guide the development of the 2026 annual budget. Some key informations needed for these Commissioners as we go through this that's important: confirmation of the 2026 priorities within the framework of the 2023-2026 strategic directions. With that, we're asking the board's guidance on funding strategies, including the use of property tax revenue and other funding sources and one-time funds. We're asking the board's guidance in potential service level reductions, areas of focus and areas to protect, and methods of reduction. And then, of course, at the end of this, as we go through our budget retreat, the direction on the maximum property tax levy request to be submitted by the NPRB in 2026. So looking ahead, I just really want to be clear that we have entered really into a very challenging period. We have really difficult budget cycles expected in the next coming years, which we've talked about before, so it's going to be a challenge. It'll be really imperative that we work collaboratively together as a board and as staff, remaining strategic and intentional, to ensure the continued sustainability of our park system. With that, I want to turn this over to Director Weisman to begin our budget discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, President Abani.
Thank you, Superintendent. While Director Weisman's coming up, I'll just note that we've been joined by Commissioner Olson and Commissioner Elper.
Good evening, President Abani and Commissioners. I'm going to start with an overview of the budget process. So the beginning of our budget process, which actually started prior to the budget retreats, is information gathering and sharing. A lot of work has already begun. Conversations and meetings have already started with the mayor and city staff around the maximum property tax levy increases. Environmental management has submitted the 2026 stormwater fee increase request based on the adopted 2026 budget plan. They have worked directly with the city budget office as well as Public Works and provided information and answered additional questions as the start of the budget process for setting the utility fee increases for 2026. And as you know, as we reported at the last board meeting, information has been shared with the city regarding the NPRB's request for the NPP 20 guaranteed annual minimum amount, which needs to be adopted by the city and the park board this year. That will set the neighborhood park amount for 2027 to 2031. This evening, we begin our work around board priorities and direction. So we have the budget retreat this evening as well as on May 28th. We will continue to meet with the city and the mayor and city staff, and we will also, after the conclusion of these retreats, we will provide information and what we've learned through the retreats in employee budget information sessions. The next part of the budget process is the development phase, and we will be beginning in May with department budget development. And as the superintendent has already mentioned, budget development this year will focus on efficiencies and core functions when addressing potential service level cuts across the organization. And so no new department budget requests will be allowed during this budget cycle as it was the last budget cycle. So for two years, we have not allowed department budget requests. So important dates in the development section of our budget development is that this board will approve the maximum property tax levy at committee on July 2nd and at the full board on July 16th. The mayor will release the city's recommended budget on August 15th, and depending on what is released on August 15th, staff may make, the superintendent may make a determination that we need to have a third budget retreat to address any significant impacts that may come out of the mayor's recommended budget. The Board of Estimate and Taxation, we will present our maximum tax levy request to them at their public hearing on September 10th, and then the Board of Estimate and Taxation sets the maximum tax levy on September 17th. The superintendent will present the recommended 2026 budget on October 15th, and that will start the review and amendment markup portion of the board's work. So we will have employee budget sessions to notify employees of what's included in the superintendent's recommended budget, and then the Administration and Finance Committee will have an opportunity to provide comment, start talking about amendments during the finance, during the committee work. And then on November 19th, it will go to the full board for comment, and on December 3rd is when the board will adopt the 2026 budget and the 2026 tax levy, and with full board approval to be determined. That date isn't showing up on the city's side yet, so we'll fill that in and make any necessary adjustments once we know that for sure. So now I'm going to turn it over to Paul Rosen, the Budget and Analysis Manager, and he will go over the next couple of sections of our presentation.
President Abani and Commissioners, I'm going to give you an overview of the 2025 adopted budget, and what happened in that budget, and the 2026 plan. So we'll start with general fund revenues. So you can see from this that by far the biggest source of revenue is property taxes, and you have your local government and aid and other revenues kind of flat over the years, and American Rescue Plan Act, that was federal funding, has ended. So because of the kind of the flat other revenues and LGA property, the park board is more reliant on property taxes each year. So you can see it's 82% of the general fund. If you went back to 2022, you would see it was 77%. So just more, more reliant on the property taxes. This slide is showing total city of Minneapolis property tax with the park board and some other city entities. And these are, the 2026 forecast is from the city budget except for that 6.3% park board. That is the park board forecast. In the city budget, it was 1.37%. So that is kind, that is an issue that we are going to have. And I also wanted to point out, the city general fund is less reliant on property tax. Their general fund is 57% funded by property tax. They have more other revenues, sources that they use to fund the general fund. On local government aid, I mentioned earlier, it has been flat, and you can see that in, it was down in 2023, but there was an increase in '24, and we're projecting '25 and '26 to be the same. That's still, the '26 number could change based on the state budget. But an important thing to keep in mind is during the last recession from 2008 to 2011, local government aid was unallotted, and the park board lost $8.5 million in certified local government aid, and some of that occurred mid-year. So adjustments had to be made in the middle of the year due to state budget, actions to balance the state budget. Park board other revenue in the general fund, so this is things like building rentals, activity fees, O&amp;M funding, and also like in 2023, you kind of see a higher amount that is ARPA funding, federal funding. So it's averaged $10.6 million, and it hasn't really changed a lot over the past 10 years. Now we'll look at expenditures. By far, the biggest expenditure in the general fund is wage and fringe. And wage and, you can see the budget's increasing, 103 million, 109 million, the plan for '26, 114 million, and that's largely been due to inflationary pressures, wage increases, increases on goods and services, contractual. So those have been pushing the budget higher. And to compare with the city expenditures in their budget, it's similar, but the city does have more other operating, which is contracts and supplies. Now we look at park board expenditures by division in the general fund. Environmental stewardship, which is forestry, asset management, and environmental management is by far the biggest division. The other item to note is the city management fee kind of has big fluctuations there, and that is due to the wage provision being held there. So as union contracts, if they're not settled, the provision is held there. So as they settle, that goes up or down. And just to kind of do a recap of what happened in the 2025 budget to balance the budget, these were the adjustments made, the major adjustments. And you'll see the service level reductions involving rec center hours and rec center more closures on Sundays and holidays, and there was a reduction of five ice rinks. And there were some one-time adjustments to help balance the budget, which is using one-time funding to have a limited activation of Graco Park and some positions that were, are being held vacant for the youth investment cap. Now we'll look at the general fund six-year projection. So you'll see the 2025 adopted budget, and the 2026 plan was created at the time of the adoption of the '25 budget. So right now, we are still kind of refining the '26 plan, and then we'll culminate in a recommended budget. Julie Weisman will speak later about what kind of items are impacting 2026 that are not included in this plan. You'll see the property tax projected increases on top, and in 2027, there's kind of a higher number, still 6%, and that is mostly due to the reopening of North Commons, funding for the operations there. This slide shows where the 6.33 projected property tax increase is going to, and it's by far a provision for wage and fringe adjustments, and that's union settlements and reclassifications. And that's almost 4% of the 6.33. We have $200,000 for the new state family and medical leave that will go into place in '26, and that, that's one of the items that's kind of changing. It looks like it will be higher than $200,000 cost due to changes in the program. Inflation on goods and services, we've built in 4% increase, kind of a, just across-the-board increase, and that's due to, in past years, inflation was high, and those budgets were not increased to keep up with inflation. So we're around $900,000 behind in purchasing power over the last five years, so we want to build that back up. And then in 2026, we have funding for the operations at Graco, Upper Harbor Terminal, Lake, and Hiawatha built into the plan. System equity investment is the operating cost for new amenities or areas that have experienced increased usage. So this is what is built into the plan. So 2026, Graco and Upper Harbor Terminal are the big impacts, and they both have some continuing expenses the next few years after that. 2027 is North Commons reopening, and in 2029 is Phelps. All right, and that is what I have. Julie Weisman is going to talk about budget issues that are impacting '26.
Thank you. Before we move forward with the budget issues, I kind of wanted to point out just a couple of things on the previous slide. So when you look at our change in expenditure increases or our balanced budget, for 2025, even though we received an 8.33% property tax levy increase, our increase in our budget overall was 5.4%. So that is due to those of other revenue sources remaining flat and not increasing, and is really this board's commitment to providing free services for our youth and the expanding of the fee discount to all parks. So for our budget issues, I would say that property taxes, both the tax collection rate and the property value changes and the impacts on homeowners, is the largest risk that we are seeing in the 2026 budget process and for future years, quite frankly. And so that is the reason why this day of the budget retreat is really focused on property taxes and the general fund and their relationship to each other. For the property tax collection rate, as I have, as we have discussed and presented last year, our collection rate between 2022 and 2020, I have the wrong dates on here, I apologize, but between 2016 and 2022 maintained an average of 99.4%. And so we had budgeted 99% as our tax collection rate and the revenue that we budgeted in the general fund. In 2023, our collection rate dropped to 97.5%, and in 2024, or 2024, it dropped even further to 96.8%. So for those two years, we were under budget in that one revenue source by 1.2 million and 1.8 million respectively, which greatly impacted our fund balance in the general fund. In 2025, we, part of the service reductions was to allow for a reduction in our property tax collection rate to 98.5%. Staff recommends that we consider lowering that even more, and we will be talking through these budget retreats and process of potentially reducing it by another half of percent to 98%. So the collection rate is really, is really being driven by the decline in the commercial property values. There has started to be more delinquencies of property taxes on the commercial side as well as successful, successful tax court resolutions that is decreasing the commercial properties property tax bill for that current year. Property value changes and impacts to homeowners. As the commercial property values continue to plummet, it is shifting the tax burden from commercial properties to residential properties and shifting that burden onto homeowners. I can let you know that the city's assessors office will present the 2025 assessment report to the Administration and Finance Committee on May 7th. So Manager Rosen talked about the statewide paid family and medical leave insurance program. Discussion regarding the premiums that need to be paid to the state for this program, the percentage that is being, that would be paid by the employee versus the employer is still being determined, and conversations have been leaning towards the employer paying up to 100% of that premium, which will increase the cost to the park board from what we had projected last year. We also think that an impact of this new program will result in more employees qualifying for family and medical leave, and perhaps more employees being out for longer periods of time, which will increase the need to allocate staff and resources to help cover those times away. Under the staffing levels, there's a new item on our list that wasn't, that appeared this year, and it's regional park restroom staffing. Increasingly, staff are identifying the need for more staffing to enhance ADA response, promote safety, reduce vandalism. promote safety, reduce vandalism and maximize service levels from, from existing bathroom facilities. Utilizing existing staff in 2025, they, we will pilot in some very limited areas. And then staff have already developed a model that would provide additional staffing to the regional restrooms. The initiative estimated for the chain of lakes is approximate cost of $200,000 per year, including staff and materials. Staff are working to identify possible funding sources, including work programs that might be able to achieve the outcome of the model. So as we've said, we are not letting departments put in new department requests. So this issue is being looked at as potentially trying to find other funding sources that will help initiate this model. So you have capital investments, enterprise fund stabilization, and then other issues. Under the other issues, again, Manager Rosen talked about the impact that not keeping up with inflation has on our buying power. What I would like to expand on is that as we look to our system needs, this $900,000 of reduced buying power has an impact on the service levels that we are able to provide. So the material and supplies that we need to, to do all of the maintenance and repair work and youth programs is impacted by not having this buying power. So as we consider service level implications, you know, it's, it, we will have a time where we may need to cut staffing, like we can't cut material and supplies because it's already been impacted so heavily through, through inflation. Our wood processing and site replacement, we were hopeful that at least a part of this issue would have been able to come off this list. And that's the cost of the disposal of our, our product. But we are, so even though we're still looking for a permanent site, so that would have stayed as an issue. The lack of options for wood processing and disposal in the Twin Cities area has led to a yearly doubling to quadrupling, in some cases, the cost of processing wood waste. So if you remember during the 20, during last year's budget development, one of the budget adjustments that made it into the adopted budget was an increase to wood processing costs. And when we went out for bid this year, those prices doubled. And so the budget that we put in place is not sufficient to cover the costs that we're going to need to pay in 2025. Are there any questions on the budget issues? You have the budget issue list in front of you. And for the public, we also will have this material available on our public website, which is on the top of each of these slides.
We could take a couple of questions. We're pretty far, we're pretty far ahead in the agenda.
Yes.
I mean, and I would want to keep it just to the pieces that have been presented. And if there are questions, I see Commissioner Alper.
Yeah, thanks very much. On slide eight, you mentioned 1.37%. Could you just clarify what that was? Or Paul Rosen mentioned it.
Yep, that's actually my next slide here. So in the mayor's recom, in the mayor's adopted 2025, '26 budget, the mayor provides a levy projections for 2025 to 2030. And you'll see for the park board, he has recommended a 1.37% property tax levy increase for the park board, where we, our needs are showing a 6.33% levy increase.
Could you, do you mind just pointing, there, there are a lot of percents.
Oh, sure.
Where are you looking?
It's this one, so 2026. And then they're recommending 90 million, 90.7 million for the park board levy, which is a 1.37% increase over last year.
Okay. You know, I mean, just what I know about this slide, I find so interesting is that we, we left last year with a higher amount of like 2.6, and we had articulated last year during the process that that was too low. And the city closed out last year with a number of 13.1, I believe. And then sort of oddly, this year, our number became 1.37 and theirs became 13.3. So theirs went up and ours went down, right? And if, the other important thing that I sort of remind myself about this is it's, it's a line item to us. And if they suppress, if the city suppresses our increase, that gives them more room in their increase, right? So, because they're looking at the total city levy ultimately, and it's kind of like a weighted average, right? So anyway, okay. Any other comments or questions so far? At this point in the agenda, we are supposed to pause. Should we keep going?
It's actually after this.
Oh, okay, thank you, okay.
Okay, so considering all the budget issues, again, property taxes is the area that's most at risk here. We began discussing last year the gap that has arisen between the city's levied recommendation, projections for the NPRB and our projections. So as you can see on these city projections, they are projecting 1.37% in 2026 for the park board. And they're projecting in 2027, 3.3% property tax increase. And if you remember from our projection spreadsheet that Manager Rosen just presented, we are showing 6.33% in 2026 and 6.16% in 2027. The difference between the city and the park board are largely two things. It's the investment that we are making in our existing staff, and it's the investment that we are making in our system equity investment through providing a current service level at Graco Park and Upper Harbor Terminal Park that is equivalent to the current service levels that we operate all of our parks throughout our system. If we don't receive that funding, it would not only impact what we can do at our new parks, it also will impact service levels throughout the city. So this chart, at the bottom of this chart, is the, is the park board's identification of the maximum property tax levy request of 6.33% that you have seen previously. At the top of the chart is the 1.37. And how that amount is broken out is that it is providing just under, well, under $700,000 to meet our current service level needs. It includes $260,000 as the annual investment to the youth investment until we reach the 2.6 million that will happen in 2027. And for system equity investment, for both Graco and Upper Harbor Terminal Parks, the city has built in $300,000 for the operations of those two parks. So the next slide, on this slide, it shows chart numbers. We have three charts, and so it identifies which numbers are included in each of the next three charts. Again, before I move on, I want to reiterate what President Abene said. The mayor has come out publicly and said he wants to reduce the overall tax levy increase for, for the city of Minneapolis to 5%. So instead of the 10.8%, he wants to reduce it to 5%. So our 6.33% increase equates to 1.12% of the overall tax, city tax. And so if we subtract the 1.12 from the 5% that the mayor wants to reach, that only leaves 3.88% for the city of Minneapolis. So therein lies the pressure that the park board, the superintendent, the president and the vice president have been receiving from the city to lower our property tax levy request for 2026. So what does that mean, the difference between our 6.33% and the 1.37%? Chart number one is the total gap. So we are projecting that we need $5.6 million for our operations in 2026. The city has, has recommended 1.2 million. So that's a $4.4 million gap. So that equates to all of the youth investment, a large part in all of the, a large part of the NPP20 maintenance funding that the general fund. So this one year could really devastate the operations of the park board. Chart two, as we fought really hard last year at the BET to get our property tax levy request, one thing they did fund was the, the staffing. They supported our union negotiations, they supported our wages. So if they just supported our wages this year, we are, we need 3.4 million. The city has allocated 924,000. So that's a $2.5 million gap. That's approximately 22 full-time positions. And that type of reduction hasn't been seen in the park board since the Great Recession. So you'll start hearing this kind of recurring theme about the Great Recession and the similarities between now and what happened then. And then the final chart shows the gap to protect service levels within our system with the addition of Graco and Upper Harbor Terminal Parks. We have estimated we need just over a million dollars. The city has built into their recommendation 300,000. So that is a gap of $760,000. So, not a lot of great news, but this is, this is what we are facing going into our 2026 budget development. Any questions?
It looks like Commissioner Olson has a question.
So just to clarify, when you say the city, you mean the mayor's office? Or is it, is it a combination of the mayor and the city councilor? What are we dealing with?
So as you, as you know, the Board of Estiment and Taxation has, is made up of the mayor and two city council members. And so three of the six voting members that set our maximum tax levy are from the city. So when I say the, the city and the mayor, I'm really referring to the city council members that are on the BET.
Commissioner Mans.
Thank you. Thanks for the report. So for the Northeast Ice Arena, I mean, that's a huge bill, and I'm pretty aware of what's going on at that location. It says, ranging from full reinvestment in Northeast Ice Arena to combining this location with Parade. Does that mean like eliminating ice at that location? Or is that meaning combining services?
Okay, President Abene and Commissioner Mans, can you repeat the question, please?
So at the end of the Northeast Ice Arena example, with all the costs that are associated with that place, staff will be directing attention alternatives ranging from full reinvestment in Northeast Ice Arena to combining this location with Parade. What do, what do you mean by combining this location with Parade? Like reducing a sheet of ice or adding a sheet of ice to Parade?
There's, Commissioner Mans, there's, the question that we are exploring in there is how we operate Northeast going forward. And so there's been many discussions about how we kind of combined and have a centralized location at Parade Ice. So having a sheet of ice at Parade has been in discussion. So we are only exploring now what that would look like because of the, the cost of Northeast Ice Ring. So either we have to find the dollars to be able to invest fully into that and change it into a functioning, really, a place that we're not just band-aiding it and really limping along with that particular facility. But we also understand that the, the need for ice is important in the city. So that's where the conversation around Parade comes and potentially what that means in that space in order to kind of meet those needs if, if the discussion around Northeast becomes of, of different use.
And those discussions will be happening during this budget cycle? And then, I mean, if, if that building goes empty? I mean, I'm, I'm, that's in my district and it's a, it's a great location, it's a great location for an ice arena, but it's also a great location for a lot of things.
Correct.
And I'm not sure how willing this board is to dispose of land or, you know, things like that at this time of budget crisis. But if we're gonna do things that are economical and we're exploring ideas, I think we should explore all the ideas possible in that space. It's a very valuable space.
Absolutely.
And it's not really parkland, it's more like an ice arena, it's a facility, so.
You know, I just want to just jump in, and I think, I appreciate those comments. I think we're gonna have a chance at the end to talk more about maybe strategies, if that's cool. And really, I think if we could keep the questions a little more to what's been presented so far. Engineers are accused of being linear thinkers, and I, I need to prove that that's the case. So are there other questions related to what's been presented so far? And maybe Director Wiseman can come back up? And do you have more content to bring, to present to us? Because I might have a couple of...
Yes.
Okay, great.
So I forgot to show this slide before I paused. And so are other adjustments not yet included? So these are the things that have come up since we created our projections last year. So for system equity investment, since the 2025 adopted budget did not include the equipment, the one-time equipment costs for Graco, that is showing up on this list for 2026, as well as now the one-time equipment costs for Upper Harbor Terminal equipment. And when I call it one-time costs, it is ongoing. But what happens when we add equipment to our system, mobile equipment specifically, to our system, the department that procures that equipment initially pays for the cost of adding it to our fleet. Once it's added to the fleet, then they pay their annual cost allocation to the Internal Services Fund. And so from that point forward, it's owned by the Internal Services Fund, and all the repair and replacement occurs within our equipment operations area. and all the repair and replacement occurs within our equipment operations area. But we need to buy the equipment. So we, we are estimating $310,000 to buy the equipment for both Graco and Upper Harbor Terminal. I have a to-be-determined line item for new park amenities. We'll discuss this further in the evening when I talk about system equity investment. So just putting that in as a placeholder and keeping it kind of at the top of our, our thought process. And then our reduction in the property tax collection rate to reduce it by another half of percent would mean a reduction to our budget of $480,000. If we pay the full premium and the change in the estimated costs, we potentially would need to add an additional $300,000 to our budget to support that new state program. And then we have, we do have the replacement to Comet slash the PIPA Soft financial application enterprise program that handles all HR payroll and our financial system. They have, the city has selected Workday. They are planning to cost-share the annual license fees for Workday, where they would ask the Park Board to pay for our license, our licenses for Workday. Comet was built into our general fund overhead fee. And so we're still working through that with them as far as what that delta would be. But the number that they have thrown out so far, which is very much an estimate, is approximately $450,000 annually for the new system. So with that, I see at least one other light.
Yeah, I will call on Vice President Musich.
Thank you, President Abene. During the last budget cycle, we had chosen to leave several youth employment positions vacant. Does the current projection that you're providing us for '26 include those positions being funded and filled?
President Abene and Vice President Musich, we have, we had a gap in 2025 of $520,000. In 2026, that gap is $260,000. So those youth program positions would not be funded until 2027, when we've reached the full 2.6 million.
Okay, thank you.
Is there more to the, your current part of the presentation?
No.
Okay.
So I would just say that the food is here.
Okay.
If you do want to take a break, we can take a break, or we can continue.
Okay, I appreciate that. You know, I want to make a few comments, and I'm sorry about that, but I really do, because I'm, you know, on the Board of Estimate and Taxation, and we did have a meeting last year, last week. And the city's fourth quarter report was presented at that time. And so I think it's really, I think, you know, I think this board understands the position the Park Board's in. But we're really in a different, we're really in a different category when it comes to property taxes than the, than the city. And these are just some of the things that stood out to me in the fourth quarter report. And it's all available online, but this was presented, as I said. So I think Mr. Rosen said tonight, 57, the city's general fund is dependent at the, to the tune of 57% on property taxes, ours is 80%. So the cities, the city also is impacted by lower tax collection rates, just like we are. But they actually saw more, they saw higher-than-projected revenues in their other revenue areas, their parking, and I don't know, there's a bunch of categories that make up the other 43%. The other, the other real difference is the city has a policy to maintain a 17% general fund balance. We have a policy to maintain a 5% general fund balance, and we're below ours. The city is above theirs. Now, remember, this is their whole general fund, not just the property tax piece. But that, in order to maintain the 17% general fund balance, that means that they need to have $113 million in the fund. And they do, in fact, they have a $27,000, $27 million more than that that are unrestricted dollars, meaning not encumbered in some way. So they actually even have more than that. So, so they're not only, not only do they have a fatter fund balance requirement, it's full and overflowing, and ours is below. And I got, I would also say that it is, I think, from my point of view, learning about all of this as a, you know, citizen board member, that the, you know, that the fees that the Park Board are required to pay the city for things like Workday aren't really negotiable, but they have a big impact. I mean, that, that's, that's, you know, that's FTEs right there. And I think having that be part of our, our burden is, isn't something I, I think is fair. So anyway, other comments or questions at this point? And otherwise, I think we should go ahead and take the break now and just stick with the order on the agenda for the flow. So with that, I'll recess, and we will reconvene, hold on here, at about 10 past 6:00. Yes, gives us 15 minutes.
One, two, three. Okay. I think I'll go ahead and reconvene, un-recess us, and ask Director Wiseman to come up and continue to present to us.
President Abeni and Commissioners, we'll move into our section regarding rebuilding from the Great Recession. And before we can talk about rebuilding, I wanted to just spend a little bit of time highlighting what happened during the Great Recession. So between the years 2026 and 2012, the U.S. experienced a mortgage crisis, an energy crisis, automotive crisis, consumer spending crisis, high inflation, and high unemployment. The impact on NPRB revenues during that period of time is that property tax revenues declined. There was an increase in delinquencies and foreclosures. And because of the recession and that economic decline, we also had at least one year during that period where we had a we did not raise taxes in one year. We also, as Manager Rosen described, had losses around local government aid. And as you know, local government aid is funded through sales tax and the state's sales tax, and it's redistributed. And when the recession happened and people limited their spending, it reduced the amount of sales tax that was collected and caused the reductions in local government aid. The impacts on the expenditure side, as you can see on the chart to the right, is that our NPRB workforce went from 582 full-time employees down to 465. That's 117 full-time positions that were eliminated through attrition, retirement incentives, and layoffs. Service level reductions in mowing, both the number of acres that we mowed and also an increase in the mowing cycles. Pruning, building and field maintenance, repairs, recreation center hours, full-time staff in parks were all reduced. We shifted our focus from full-time workforce and reducing our full-time workforce and did some increasing to our seasonal and part-time workers to attempt to get us through this period of recession. There's a lot of similarities of the Great Recession and the things that are happening with our economy and situation now. So that's why I'm, you know, I'm really highlighting this part of the presentation, where during the Great Recession, it was the residential mortgage crisis with people foreclosing and losing their homes. Now it's the commercial properties that are in crisis and losing, losing value. High inflation, we have high inflation. High unemployment remains to be seen how the unemployment stabilizes or increases. But a lot of similarities between that time and this time. So when the superintendent talks about kind of foreseeing those difficult years coming, happening going forward. So rebuilding from the Great Recession. As the economy improved and revenues recovered, the park board entered into a period of strategic and intentional growth. We looked at we looked at rebuilding. When you looked at rebuilding, you have to look internally before requesting additional funds, which we did early in the period of time of rebuilding. Organizational restructuring happened both as NPRB-wide as well as organizational restructuring within departments. Operational efficiency has been ingrained in the way that we perform and serve. And that began in the 2013 to 2018 period of time, and it continues even to this day. And we'll have some reporting out of that in this, in this section of the presentation. We looked at restoring service levels. We corrected for years of deferred investment. We added system equity investment, and we responded to new challenges. At the beginning, we, we did an organizational restructuring to improve service delivery both internally and externally. That resulted in leadership and service area restructuring. So we went from a district model back to our division model, which we operate under today. We established our service areas for both recreation and asset management and forestry. We looked at forestry practices and also trash hauling and recycling processes. And that was an intentional direct effort due to worker safety and the experience that, experience we were seeing of employee injuries. And we purchased more current, up-to-date and pieces of equipment to help with pruning, as well as a new trash hauling system and collecting in our regional system. We improved worker safety and we just decreased our worker compensation costs. We realigned positions and accounts to meet the needs of the community and the organization. Within looking at positions and realigning positions, we were able to convert some of those seasonal and part-time hours that we used to get us through the recession back into full-time employees. So instead of asking for a property tax levy increase, we converted seasonal parkkeeper hours into 10 new parkkeepers at one point in this process. We transferred activities that were not self-supporting out of the enterprise fund. We talked about the enterprise fund stabilization. That work started during this period and continues to this day. We implemented project charge-back model for planning division positions. So this is the charging to the capital project funds so that the planning division is no longer 100% supported by property taxes and the general fund. It's also supported by the work that they do within the projects for which they're assigned. And then we implemented the use of vacancy savings to increase organizational capacity. At the time of surplus and renewal, this was a great way to increase organizational capacity. We were very intentional about and conservative about the vacancy savings. It has grown over time, but it is less than the industry standard of 4%. However, in the time of the last, in the time of revenue decreases and under-budgeted, under-budgeted property taxes, we don't have as much of a cushion because we already budget vacancy savings within our, within our area. So when we have spending freezes and hiring freezes, it impacts over and above what is budgeted for vacancy savings. So after completing all of the internal work and putting in the new efficiencies, NPP 20 marks the first major infusion of property tax dollars to rebuild from the Great Recession. The Closing the Gap Report identified maintenance, repair, rehabilitation, and capital investments that had been reduced and deferred for many years. It reached a critical point where most of our assets would be beyond its useful life cycle by 2040 if funding wasn't increased. The 2015 Closing the Gap Report identified the need of 14.3 million plus inflation each year for capital and rehab investment needs, and $3 million plus inflation each year for maintenance and repair operations. So on this chart, you can see in 2017, NPP 20 started. We received a $3 million infusion of property tax to increase and enhance operations, maintenance, and repair services. We received $10.5 million for rehabilitation and capital investment. So we did not receive the So we did not receive the 14.3 million that we had, had calculated that we needed. So although NPP 20 is providing a lot of great work, it didn't address all of the needs that we have in our neighborhood system. The chart shows the positions that were added to the budget in 2017. You'll see the column where there's 7.75 FTEs that were added. These are more support services for the NPP 20 work. So it includes some administrative work, some planning staff, as well as finance, HR, IT. The next column is the general fund maintenance and repair. And you'll see that there were 24.6 full-time positions and 5.25 seasonal positions that were added to the budget for NPP 20. And that was to increase to industry standards, our mowing cycles, pruning, building maintenance, those type of activities. And then we have some trades positions that were budgeted and added to the capital project funds to provide, internally provide some of the rehabilitation work that is a part of our current CIP. And so in total, we added 52.45 positions to our system in that one year. I'm going to now turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Barrick so that he can discuss some of the operational efficiencies that have been put in place recently.
Thank you, Director Weisman, President Abeni, Vice President Musich, and Commissioners. Yeah, so I wanted to, we share some of the operational efficiencies, as you mentioned, as we've always been kind of tasked and charged with doing more with less, as always is the case. This is work that I would want to give a shout out to Chris DeRoche and Kelly Armstrong, our data team and systems team over in Asset Management Department. But starting with, you know, highlighting the AVM work. So I think you're all familiar with the Plow Tracker and some of this other work that we've been doing. We highlight how it can save us money or how we can be more efficient is on the trash collection. And so taking the AVM data, using that to track the, the two trucks that move throughout the regional system and pick up the toters. The neighborhood park trash is being managed through the city residential collection. You've all seen the residential toters in front of the rec centers and those get moved out. But then in the regional system, using the AVM data, we can kind of derive like when the toter was last picked up. And so that can help us to determine where the hotspots are, and we can be more efficient, more direct, save time, and do, do more with fewer drivers in keeping the trash emptied. I won't read you the rest of the slide, but you can see that it's, this has been in place since 2023. And it's, you know, similar again to the snowplow tracker where we have that on the, on the website. You can see that allows our plow drivers to see like, did that get hit? Is that done? We can be more intentional in our routes and where we're headed as opposed to just kind of doing the same thing. And even if we've plowed it twice, we're just keep doing the route, right? So this leveraging technology to be more direct and efficient. And then the other one, using data and analytics for both our BIFs and our utility billing. So you may recall, I believe it was about 2023 again, too, where Chris DeRoche did a presentation on our BIFs where we found that we were, we were spending upwards of $600,000 a year on BIFs. The system's in place. We're kind of loose to, you know, people would call and request more service. We would say yes, right? Or they'd say, I want a BIF over here. We would say yes. And so understanding where are we actually putting the BIFs, what rotation they're on, and how do we manage that within a budget, using data again, and then working with the vendor BIFs to, to set up a system that we can monitor on a monthly basis, get, get folks managing their service areas within budget. You can see that from, you know, '21 to 2024, we saved almost $300,000 in, in our BIF operation. And then when it comes to utilities, this is always one, if, I recall when I first started in 2017, Linden-Vice Verta at the time had just done a, a utility bill cleanup on the water billing and had found, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of like $40,000 of water billing. And there was an effort put in to get meters installed at everywhere, you know, every rec center and every pool, make sure that the meters were properly split if it was a joint site so that we could take responsibility for our, for our bills. And so again, Chris and Kelly working with the finance team to go through our utility bills and water billing. They wrapped that work up last year, and you can see that we, there was almost $400,000 of one-time savings in identifying what's really happening at each water meter, what should be on the bill, and what we should be paying. So we, we continue to do these, these efforts, right, to keep things under wraps. But it, it's kind of a never-ending process. And so we have Cartograph coming on board, not to oversell that, but we do feel Cartograph is going to be an enterprise asset management system that we can use to do an even, you know, it's one more data point collection that we can add into the mix and hopefully continue to increase our efficiencies as we go forward.
So NPP 20 addressed the gap in maintenance, repair, rehabilitation, and capital. It did not address the closing of the youth investment gap. In 2019, a report was issued that showed using $20,000, the full gap in all recreation services was calculated to be approximately 3.4 million. Of that amount, approximately 2 million was the additional amount needed to close the gap for investment in youth. So between 20, between 2019 and 2022, we worked negotiating with the city and the members of the BET to support an investment in youth. And with the adoption of the 2022 budget, it included a historic, the historic investment of 2.6 million for youth and intergenerational programming. The FTEs that were added to the system at that time included IT technicians to support the computer hubs and Spark Studios, two naturalist program coordinators, the establishment of six Spark Studios with the manager and the program specialists, the five recreation program leads, and eight youth program specialists for a total of 24 positions being added in 2022. The next chart is taken directly out of the 2024 Youth Investment Report that you, that was provided to the board through Ps and Cs at the previous board meeting. And these are, this shows the participation growth that has been accomplished through the youth investment. And just a caveat for 2024, we did, you know, put in a new active net system, which has better participation capabilities of counting and tracking participation. So part of that increase in 2024 is due to that new system. So before I go on to the next session or next section, are there any questions related to the rebuilding from the Great Recession?
I don't see any. I would just comment, I really appreciate some, shedding some light on some of the operational efficiencies, both the historic ones and what's going on now. It shows me that as the organization develops more data, it can do things more efficiently. And again, that's why for the park board, trying to fund more data positions as we've been trying to do, or asset manager positions as we've been trying to do, and just not be not successful, what may be in the long run, help, help find more efficiencies in the work and, and the funding. Commissioner Thompson.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that to say thank you for that context. I think it's a cautionary tale of what we want to avoid having to live through again as the conditions are very similar. So thank you for that context and all the hard work around it.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I just had one maybe comparison anecdotally, but you, you know, two of the three things that happened during the recession, we've already kind of addressed, service level reductions and, you know, the deferred capital investment. Would you say they're comparable, what we've experienced the last year or two or looking forward is comparable to the service level reductions that we had in 2008, 2008? Or are they, is there a, you know, I know it's probably hard to compare apples to apples there, but because it's very obvious, the one thing we haven't done is cut positions, which we had to do in 2008. So I'm just trying to get a sense, you know, maybe, maybe, I just didn't know what those two levels, if they were comparable, or if we haven't had that level of stress yet on service level that we had in 2008.
President Abeni and Commissioner Schaefer, we lost 117 full-time positions between 2008 to 2012. And so that was significant service level reductions. My concern about where, where we are at right now is going into 2026, if we don't get the property tax levy requests that we are seeking, that is recession-level reductions. When we say 22 to 30 full-time positions, that's significant reductions. What we did, but what we did in 2025 was already some service level reductions, and we have done service level reductions. And my fear is if we, if we are forced into this reduction in 2026, then what? Because it's not going to get better in 2027 or 2028. And we potentially could be at a point where we are losing, you know, hundreds of full-time employees. I'm, I hope that that's not what happens, I hope, you know? But there's a lot of, there's a lot of analysts and talk about that this country is entering into another recession.
Commissioner Menz.
Thank you. So are you suggesting that we're, we should really be preparing for consistent service level reductions or staffing reductions over the next three to five years?
Yeah. The staff will reduce.
Yes.
For the people that aren't in the room, could you repeat that statement at the mic, please?
They're really, excuse me, President Abeni, these are really one in the same, right? The service level reductions that have happened so far are really done with the intent of retaining staffing. As we go into the next level of service level reductions, you would likely start to see the complement of staffing associated with that. So, you know, at, at one point, we had 2.5 million. That's all we really had for a capital improvement program in the neighborhood parks. I don't even think we can imagine that today from where this board is at and what you've experienced as board members, what the current community experiences around that. We had to take recreation centers and we created hub models where you had maybe a grouping of staff working out of several centers, trying to keep them open a certain number of hours. So there was a significant reduction in that type of service. The mowing cycles lengthened, the pruning cycles lengthened, so the general upkeep and look of the facilities diminished. So that's, that's when, when we look at, is it a service level or an employee cut? They're one in the same because in order to pull down those service levels, you have to remove the employees at that part, and we'd like to avoid that.
Yes, thank you. As Director Weisman comes up, back up, Mr. Rosen had the slide showing just how much of the general fund budget is wages and salaries.
All right. Thank you, President Abeni. We're going to move into the next session to talk about additional responsibility and/or mandates. And at this point, I will turn it over to Peter Ham.
Ham.
Ham, sorry. Peter Ham, who will present the next set of slides. Thank you.
Good afternoon, evening, President Abeni and board, and Peter Ham with the work for Adam. And I'm a data insights analyst, and I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the future and how our space and the city's space intertwine. We have a set of policies that line up with the Minneapolis's 2040 plan around service, I'm not going to say service level, but the amount of land that we provide to our residents based off of housing units. It's going to potentially get a little complicated if I ever say households, know that I mean housing units. And that it's in our comprehensive plan along with our park dedication ordinance and has been for a while that we are aiming to provide .01 acres per household for neighborhoods and community parks. And in the 2040 plan, you can see that they have three different policies that talk about parks. They want us to build new parks in underserved areas, make new and existing parks more accessible by biking and walking, and improve the design and programs. These line up because that's what we're doing. And the city's going to grow. The 2040 plan allows for much more density. You can see here in the top left, we are approximately 2023 populations, 426,000 with 203 housing units. Between the, where those bottom three lines split off is, starts to be estimates. The city and their 2040 plan estimate a very conservative amount of growth as compared to what is possible within the 2040 plan. So if every unit that could be redeveloped were developed at its maximum capacity, we could have as many as 399,000 housing units. But the rest of these numbers are going to be based off of their very conservative estimate. We have 7,059 park acres right now. That is including water, it's including neighborhood and regional. And the number of overall acres per housing unit is .035, which is above the .01. However, as you're going to see, there are some very specific and disparate reasons for that, largely are very large lakes, are regional parks, Theodore Worth, riverfront. But we know that there are gaps. There have been gaps for a long time. We point out the gaps. We look at our investment strategy in our, in our CIP, looking at our ACP, areas of concentrated poverty, and those same areas that are above 50% minority population. As you can see, the, they overlap with the TPL report of our park acres per person. So if we just flip back and forth, you can see many of them line up. And they also have not provided, the TPL has not provided a specific number, so I did a little bit of an audit based off of, what do the different colors mean in terms of our parkland acreage per household? As you can see, they're, west of Lake Nacomis is a, these are based off of census tracts, a couple, a handful of them that touch in a area that has the same color scheme within the TPL report. We are as high in our very dark areas on this map as .05 acres per household and as low as .002 or .003. That area of .014 is pretty near North Commons and is, that's an area, a neighborhood that would represent a near North Commons, and is, that's an area, a neighborhood that would represent a .01, just as you know the system, you can keep that in mind. These also happen to overlap with our park search areas. So, as we are looking to do things like bring, as we're looking at the Grand Rounds Missing Link or Upper Harbor Terminal, you'll see that they match up with our low-service areas that are below our, our targets as an ordinance and in our comprehensive plan. And the, some of these areas, like Greco, have been accounted for as, as they are our land now, and count as acreage in this, in this metric. So, within that, you could, they've, I did a lot more detailed looking at this, but I tried to keep it as high level for communication purposes, that you can see that it's park acres and housing units. So, this is how the math works out, to be able to see what the .05 means. The .002 over south of Loring Park, you'll see that that's a very dense area. And that's some of these other, and while there are some parks there, 22 acres, it's not terrible, it's very dense. So, it provides very low park acreage per housing unit as compared to other parts of the city. And I think the next part is going to be around system equity investment. And if you have any questions for me before I sit down, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I'll turn it over.
Does anybody have any questions? I actually have a question on that slide. Thank you for this. When you do this, I know that there's ways in which the Trust for Public Land, Trust for Public Land looks at parkland outside of Minneapolis's boundaries. Are you excluding that area? That's parkland outside of our municipal boundary?
So, the Trust for Public Land only looks at the land that's within our city. And the question of how much land do we own is, I could give you like six different answers, depending on who's asking the question. We are counting everything that we own. If we are managing it and providing services at it, then we are counting it. That includes water, it includes Theodore Worth, which is not fully within the city limits.
So, so when you're looking at, you're, even though I, I think this is the, like on that slide that was just up, the one that was, yeah. So, that shows a municipal boundary there, but we know Theodore Worth expands to the, to the west.
Yep. And the, this map that you're looking at, that's behind the numbers, that is the city's 2040 expansion zones. So, if you look at the gray that's in that map, that's what they say are the high-density expansion zones, where the most likely to have population growth. And then the overlapped, let me see if I can show with my mouse here, like these areas, these are our park search areas. These darker areas is the 2040 plan. And then I did an analysis, just some case studies on a couple census tracts within that, to show what our land acreage per housing unit is within certain areas.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
President Abani and commissioners, so that segues us into our system equity investment conversation. So, the NPRB established the system equity investment process in 2019 to ensure sustainable funding for park system growth. The NPRB system has seen growth in both regional and neighborhood parks. Expansion is driven, is being driven by the residential developments in areas historically designated for non-residential uses, new parks and amenities being added to align with the city's growth and respond to the evolving needs of its neighborhoods. And then also the targeted investments that we are making to correct historical inequities in park access. To support increased demands on the system, service level requirements should be integrated into financial planning, incorporated into our financial projections, annual budgets, and property tax requests. So, all of those started in 2019. It needs to be comprehensive in scope to ensure all operational aspects are considered. As we have implemented the system equity investment process, it has been phased in. We started first with only addressing new parks or large new amenities. Then we looked at an increase in park usership. And now, we are starting to look at new amenities within already existing parks. We first focused on maintenance only, and then we moved towards activation of the new sites and moved to policing. We included in system equity investment increase in policing due to, to both the expansion of our park system as a whole, as well as increased usage in different areas of the city. And we are also starting to look at support services. I want to note that as we look at new amenities being added to our existing parks, we also need to consider savings due to the elimination of amenities that happen as a, as a park plan is being implemented. So, if you read, if you eliminated a tennis court and put in a soccer field, right, there's, what is the delta in the maintenance needs of something like that? And then finally, we need to be supported through collaboration and communication to ensure transparency and gain a shared commitment between the Park Board, the city, the Board of Estimate and Taxation, and the public. Up to 2025, the adoption of the 2025 budget, the NPRB had received the commitment and support it needed for its system equity investment. For the first time, however, in 2025 and in 2026, the mayor's recommendations and our ultimate property tax levy for 2025 did not include the support that we needed for the activation of Greco Park. This slide shows the system equity investment that occurred before we had a system equity investment process. Weber Natural Swimming Pool and the Phillips Aquatic Center predate the system equity investment process, and in reality, highlighted the need for the process to be developed. So, when Weber Natural Filtration Swimming Pool was added in 2025, we activated it with lifeguards and increased maintenance that was needed for this one-of-a-kind amenity. And then when the Phillips Aquatic Center opened in 2018, we added to the budget full-time aquatic positions. It's the first time in our systems, I think, history that we have full-time lifeguards as positions here at the Park Board. And those were added for the Phillips Aquatic Center. So, you can see between 2015 and 2018, there were 17, almost 18 positions that were added due to these two new amenities. Since the system equity investment and our annual process being implemented, we have added 11 full-time positions and almost four equivalent part-time hours for various areas of the city and various new amenities and parks. So, it includes the Commons, includes the North Loop Park, Market Square, Dog Parks, and various other activities. And you can see each year the different additions as they came. And then Manager Rosen provided the update going forward as far as what is being added for Greco, Upper Harbor Terminal, North Commons Park, and Phelps Park, when that one comes back online for the park system. So, the stormwater management, I've included this slide under this presentation because a lot of the stormwater management between us and the city is mandated by the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, won't read the whole thing, and the municipal separate stormwater system permit. The NPRB and city are co-permittees. The NPRB owns parts of the stormwater system that collects stormwater within our 7,059 acres of NPRB-managed parkland and water. We are required to comply with design, construction, and maintenance permit requirements that are set by the MPCA. The NPRB did not have a dedicated funding source to maintain and operate stormwater infrastructure on parkland. And in 2024, the NPRB was successful in establishing the stormwater utility fee to start addressing these issues. So, this final slide of my presentation is from rebuilding from the Great Recession and with system equity investment. This now reflects full-time position changes for all funds by division between 2013 and 2025. So, during the Great Recession, we lost 117 full-time employees. This chart shows that we have added 177 full-time employees. That's over and above what we lost. And that is largely due to the system equity investment and other emerging needs that we have provided for in our strategic and intentional growth of this system. So, as our division percentages lay out, the percentage increase of full-time positions among the divisions is pretty similar with environmental stewardship at almost 47% of the 177 employees, and recreation at 30%, with the rest between the superintendent's office, deputy superintendents, and planning. I think it's important to look at the columns between management, admin, and frontline. So, frontline staff are, are those staff that are seen by the public, that are out in the public, providing the services. And of the 177 additions to the system, 132 of them are out providing, providing services to the public. That's almost 75% of the additions. Just under 7% is management, and then 18.6% just under 19% is administration and office. And again, we're providing as, you know, as finance, HR, adult athletics department, all those things behind the scenes that provide, that provide support and services to our operations. So, just as we, you know, again, I've, I've kind of got the re-current theme of strategic and intentional. So, just as we have been strategic and intentional about the growth of our system, we're going to need to be strategic and intentional as we face the challenges that we will face in the coming, coming years. So, are there any questions about system equity investment? All right. I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Ringo. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Director Wiseman, President Abani, commissioners. So, this, this material that I'm going to have in the next few slides is actually probably pretty fresh for you. These are things that during your term, during this term in particular, in one way or another, you've touched, you've influenced, you tried to, and worked hard to, and succeeded in many cases in securing additional funding. But what we wanted to do today for kind of the entire story of where we've been and how we have grown, for both you and the public, and however we have to work to secure funding moving forward, be able to give as complete a picture if possible of the things that we know will be asked as we walk through this process. One of the most common things that happens when we start walking into these types of budget pieces is a question about service redesign, and what are the options to remove any duplicative services. So, one of the most robust times that I've come to understand that this organization has really done this was actually just slightly before my time. I started October of 1999. So, I, I have to say, the two years that preceded this and this work, I know the people who did it, but I, I don't actually know all of the, of the work that was done. This was a two-year project, and they reviewed over 20 service areas. They really focused in parkways, parkway lighting, stormwater, trails and bikeways, urban forest, city-owned green spaces, and composting facility, the Everelusive Composting Facility. And what they were really looking for at this time is things that would be a net zero change in budget either at the city or the Park Board, but might realign the services in a way that kind of favored whatever, whatever the strengths were of the, of each of the organizations. So, on parkways, we'll talk a little bit more exactly where that has gotten to at this point. But this was really, you know, at one point, we would have had all of the pothole filling equipment, we would have had all the sweeping equipment, we would have had crews associated with all of that. Those pieces all moved over to, to the city. The parkway light, lighting, about 1,500 lights that are along our parkways, not trails, not the interior pieces, but those 1,500 parkway lights, probably more now. That was 25 years ago, quarter of a century ago. Hard to really fully grasp. But that, that would have been them taking on those lights and actually changing the standards from the cubes to the little teardrop-type standards is, was part of that. Stormwater, the concept here is that we would actually give them all of our infrastructure, and they would take care of it. That was kind of the plan at that time. This really wasn't so much about us giving them easements or things like that for their infrastructure. This was about us handing them our infrastructure. Trails and bikeways actually came a little bit later. It came just a few months into 2000, and that was when federal funding was really popular for trails. We were getting, seeing a lot of new trails coming in, Cedar Lake Trail, Kennelworth Trail, Midtown Greenway. This was kind of the boom of the trail development with those federal funds within the city of Minneapolis. We were the trail owners, they had on-street striping. So, so a lot of that divided up where most of the trails that were separated trails became our responsibility, and much of the on-street pieces were their responsibility. Certainly in the city, this dynamic has changed. They do a lot of great separated trail work now, so their trail inventory is quite high. Urban forest, there can be a misconception on this, is that this is when we got the tree canopy of the boulevards, and this, that actually would be a misconception. We already had the tree canopy of the boulevards, that's why we were the experts in this. But they still had a bunch of small public lands, like fire stations, police stations, things like the Loring Greenway, where they had trees on them, and they were trying to maintain them, and it wasn't their expertise. So, we took those on at that time, and owned the trees in those spaces. The city has, at the time, about 350 acres of city-owned green space that they were looking to try to see if we might want to take care of. We said yes to 11 acres, and an example of that is like Ryan Lake. We said yes to 11 acres, and an example of that is like Ryan Lake up in north Minneapolis, where we've got a little bit of a, probably a dock and some little path up to it at this point. And then there was an agreement at the time to do a joint proposal for a composting site. Fast forward to this term and the work all of you have done, two of your big pieces has been around stormwater and parkways. One of the things that happened for stormwater is in 2005, the stormwater utility fee was initiated, so there was a new funding source in the city. We certainly were getting some reimbursement dollars through a good part of that. In 2023, with the good work of this board, we were able to get an ordinance amendment with the city of Minneapolis, where we became a line item on the utility bill and started getting dedicated stormwater system funding. That program will be growing over time. Right now, it's operational, but we'll also be seeking capital in that category as well. Staff have been doing on the city and the park board side for us, this is Deb Pilger, Rachel Crabbe, Cliff Swenson, Andy Schilling have been doing a lot around ownership and maintenance matrix of all of the infrastructure, and especially Deb and Rachel have been working very hard on the stormwater program. We're working, we're starting to make some great progress on a JPA that would essentially establish the processes by which we're able to ask for and secure funding on a regular basis. I think these two examples, I'll get to Parkway in just a minute, and it kind of ties in with Julie's presentation. In this rebuild, the strategic rebuild, we have really intentionally tried to not take money from one part of the organization and just push it into a new need, but to actually go out and find funding for the new needs. So there's been a real strategic piece, so stormwater was one. If we think of a house, every owner does some part of its improvements. This board took on stormwater. You also took on parkways. So we mentioned in the service redesign, there was this kind of separation of the maintenance that went over to the city. And what we had found is that those dollars hadn't really increased over time. This board worked to get an ordinance that put into place through 2027, an increase up to 2.75 million. We're collaborating on the overall parkway paving program, we're working on the JPA. We will still have reconstruction responsibilities, which is a big piece, and we're going to have to figure out how to find those dollars. We're hopeful that we might be able to be included in some state funding. That would be probably one of the best sources for it. But we will still need collaboration even likely on those reconstruction dollars with the city, because we likely won't be the ones who are able to receive it. They've got kind of bad ability. Another common question that happens to us when we get into these times as well, go after those non-public funds, go get those dollars, because that's where it is. And this, again, we continue to rise in our success around the non-public funds, there's no question. Non-public funds are not as dependable as public funds, so they tend to bear themselves to have a greater interest and maybe application to capital or specific project-type work than they are as much to, say, funding staff or something along those lines. But in the last three years, there's been at least five fundraising agreements that this board has engaged in with various groups, with various different levels of success, right? Like, we have some tools here, we're trying to use them, sometimes they work, sometimes they're a little less successful. Certainly, on the high level of successes in North Commons, where they have raised, I think at this point, 16.5 million dollars. So those tools are there. They lend themselves a little bit more to the capital side. We've seen more and more use of donation agreements and expanding that beyond capital, with the kind of biggest donation agreement in our system was the Trailhead at Theodore Worth Regional Park. But now we're seeing donation agreements around natural area management, some levels of funding just coming directly in, trees, assessment relief for property owners. So there's a variety of different ways we're starting to see donations coming in. We're trying to build some new tools and relationships. You just saw the MOU for the Friends of Minnehaha Falls. Our most successful operating agreement is actually the Lopet Foundation, where we actually have really summer, kind of year-round activities happening there. And we do have now an internal sponsorship policy, which should help us better seek sponsorships. And then on this one, the non-public one, one of the big ones here is the endowment that you all passed at the beginning of this year. Again, here you are as a board saying, let's not take from existing resources to deal with some of the most difficult things that are going to be our next items. An endowment is looking at historic infrastructure, some natural resources work, as well as the regional park care. This board has followed kind of the suit of, let's find the new resources to cover the additional work we want to do in the system. So unless there's any questions on that, we could move into ideas, I know a few of you have some, on revenue generation. And I'm going to go grab my board, so one second.
So, yeah, I think we're through the staff presentations now, so we move into Commissioner Freeform. And so, okay, I think Vice President Musich's light came on first, so go ahead.
Thank you, President Abeni. So I've been thinking about this quite a bit, and I know in the past, we've had conversations at a board level with every board that I've served on about advertising or naming rights or things like that to help us with generating additional revenues to support some of the needs of the organization. So I'm thinking things like advertising in our restroom stalls and maybe getting sponsors for our portageons. It's not super exciting, and maybe it only brings in $50,000, but that's $50,000 we don't have to tax people to accomplish. So those are some things I think we might want to look into, and I don't know if there's additional advertising opportunities, maybe on the fencing at some of our athletic facilities. And I know that's a little bit unsightly for neighbors, but all the suburbs do it. And I can't imagine they would do it if it wasn't providing them value. So I think it's something we should at least look into. And then, yeah, then the naming rights piece is something we've talked about briefly before, but it would allow someone to have their name on a room or a building or something like that, and allow us to then be able to reinvest those funds into that facility's maintenance or upkeep. Those are the only ones I have so far, but I will continue to think about it.
Thank you, Vice President Musich. And actually, I appreciate that. Yeah, I think if, you know, obviously, we can ask questions, but if one of the assignments to us was to think about revenue strategies, okay. Commissioner Olson.
Yeah, so I have a few. I mean, some are, you know, insane, some are my work. I mean, on here, I did have, yeah, naming rights or like naming subscription or something like that, like you contribute this much annual, you know, to our endowment or something like that, and you get a bench after you. And you do this, and you have higher tiers. But I would maybe want to, as we think about it, maybe rather than a lump sum, and you get it forever, you get it for a time, if it's like a subscription thing, something like that. You know, we've been, you know, Commissioner Alper in particular has been talking about this, but parking fees, parking meters, parking enforcement, just bump that up, that land, that parking land that has value. Often in our country, we do not value parking space nearly enough. There's a lot of really great research on this. Anywhere there's parking, charge for it, you know? Consider charging for it. Consider bumping it. Consider bumping enforcement. Let's see here, I'm trying to go through the more practical ones first. You know, there's, you know, the city now is working on more kind of small vendors and allowing that, I think, within our parks would be great. We really underutilize the amount of, you know, food and drinks and treats that we could offer within our parks, and if we could have some sort of profit-sharing sort of situation within that, you know, make that situation easier. I know kind of we charge like kind of daily fees, things like that. Find some sort of program that really allows folks to come in, make some profit, and then we get to reap some reward from that. I saw, so data requests, there was a law, Representative Green just passed, and that's in the House Judiciary Bill HF 1999, where it will now limit data requests for schools, public schools, because they have a lot of folks who are kind of maliciously using those data requests. We might want to look at within our legislative agenda nearing off of that, and maybe that could reduce some of that staff time and cost. I also saw within here about internet access. If we're talking about sponsorships, maybe, you know, US internet is Minneapolis-based, Minnesota-based, asking them for some sort of sponsorship of increasing our network access and bandwidth and things of that nature. Maybe we've already done that, but some sort of assistance there. Okay, now kind of going into the more, oh, also for lobbying efforts, I really think, you know, O and M, you know, this operations and maintenance, I think we just need to hit it really, really hard and make it like a top priority. I think we started to see some movement there, and I think we were actually going to see some success until, you know, Republicans got a tie here and, you know, budget issues and, you know, who knows what's going to happen in government, you know, we're talking a little bit in the room. But I think that just needs to be a top priority, that we get that, and we maintain that, and we make it sure it's permanent. I mean, that's like 10% of our budget if we were to get all of that. All right, so now on to kind of, oh, another thing, speed cameras on parkways. I was biking to work today on our parkway along Minnehaha. I was going 23 miles an hour on my bike, so over the speed limit. Every single car passed me, and they were probably going 30 miles an hour or more. That would take time to set up, and I know there's a whole process for that, and there's kind of the city's doing some stuff. We should get in on that. Obviously, the primary thing for that would be reducing the amount of folks who are speeding and the safety concerns there and making it, you know, we have issues with now e-bikers on our, you know, bikeways, right, going over the speed limit there, and it's hard to encourage people to get on. But anyway, that could also be a source of revenue generation. Okay, so now into some kind of bigger things. New York City did congestion pricing, and it is a huge success. Virtually every opponent who was against it beforehand is now kind of seeing that it has created all these amazing different things. That would be a huge lift. This is way long-term, and it would have to go through the state, it'd have to go through city and all those things. But we could then have some sort of provision within that, that, okay, some of those funds go to the park board for, you know, environmental, climate sort of things, find some sort of long-term, that's some new revenue people are always driving through using our highways, right? And model after New York there. Let's see here. Sorry, I'm sorry, everyone. I was thinking a lot. Yeah, so I don't know, I don't know, maybe, Brian, you know, can we just increase our park dedication fees? What's the process for that? You know, it seems like maybe that's been at a flat rate. Is it possible for us to bump that? And, you know, as we mentioned in 2040, we do expect more billing to happen. What's the process for that? Let's look into that. That is one of maybe the few levers that we have that we can turn. And then this is really radical, and I don't know if it'll ever happen, but if we really start to get into tough situations as a city, maybe we look at annexation. Minneapolis hasn't done that. We are one of the few cities in kind of the nation that doesn't really go out into our kind of suburban neighbors. And that is probably an insane lift and would be so opposed at the legislature. But if we are really looking at like really long and tractable issues, that could be something that we perhaps consider as a city, and obviously, the park board wouldn't leave that, that'd be like a city thing. And that's, I think, what I have at the moment.
Okay, that's the spirit. And also, and also, I think that, I think that we don't have to answer the feasibility questions on this at this stage. I think that the staff work team's going to do that. But I will say, we're surrounded by incorporated areas, and only cities that have unincorporated boundary neighbors do annexation. Okay, had to say it. Commissioner Rucker.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on Vice President Musich with the advertising and sponsorships. Everybody's doing it. Billion-dollar businesses are doing it. You have, I know everybody go to games, I don't care what type of game it is, Target Center, Target Field, US Bank Stadium. I just don't see, you know, why we shouldn't go after that type of sponsorship. Even on the jerseys, professional sports, you see Emirates. It's on the referees', you know, uniform jerseys as well. So if we can maybe get a committee together and, you know, just try to go out and solicit these businesses, corporations, to try to bridge the gap that we're going to have and that we're having right now, I think that would be great. Soon, you know, start sooner or later, you know, because we see what's coming down the road, you know, just from this presentation. So I would be willing to go out and, you know, to help out, you know, just speak on, you know, the recession that Wiseman was talking about back in, you know, '06 with the fire department, we were talking about laying off at least 30 firefighters. But we went out and solicited Quick Plan. I don't know if everybody remembers Quick Plan, when we had the billion-dollar lawsuit for smoking. So we went out, solicited them, and we had a 10-year contract with them, so we wouldn't lose, you know, firefighters. I can't remember how much money they gave us, because we were, it was a shortfall with local government aid. So we bridged that gap with Quick Plan, which all they did was, we have a tarp that goes on the back of one of our rigs that covers the hose, and all they had was their advertisement on the back of that. And that brought in revenue, so we wouldn't have to lay off 30 firefighters. So, like I said, I'd be willing to head it up, or if anybody want to join in and go out and solicit some of these corporations.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Alper.
Thank you. It's great to hear all the ideas up here today so far. I just have a general comment. I sort of recollect us doing a similar exercise at one of our committees of the whole, maybe a couple of years ago, and it would be nice to see those ideas as well, instead of starting with a, you know, I'm trying to remember what some of those were, and it'd be interesting to see what we've missed from there with the discussion tonight, just to, I always find it harder to start from a blank slate. But besides that, I would just like to echo the comment, you know, it was really striking to hear that, see the percentages of our reliance on property taxes from, I wrote down, 77% in 2022, 82% in 2026. And so I just think that whatever we can do to reverse that and to rely less on it makes a lot of sense. And so, you know, seeing that the city has more money coming in from fees makes me think about parking to, you know, I know, thanks for the shout-out, Commissioner Olson, but I just, I think it's a fairly low barrier, we're in complete control, it's an auxiliary service that isn't part of our core central mission, and that's why I'm pro-raising those. And I know we've done a market analysis, but, you know, these are dire times based on what I'm hearing, and this is something that we can do immediately, that would have immediate impact on our, positive impact on our system. Another thing, you know, I'm thinking, I'm looking at some of those historic properties. I continue to think that maybe that's not the right business for us to be in. Again, I think part of our core central mission is, it's the trees, it's the natural areas, it's the kids. Historic properties, meh, I mean, I think it's a bit of a stretch. So that's something that I would either divest ourselves of or figure out how to monetize, again, similar to the Presidio in San Francisco, if we could monetize them more, maybe it's worth keeping. Then I, sorry, Commissioner Mans, but Northeast Ice Arena, oof, that's a, that's a real, real problem child. So, you know, is it worth keeping? I don't know. Not quite sure of the options there. And then thinking about hockey, I think it's a real loss, these parks, these, I really hope we can figure out a, you know, some way to do an equitable plan for 2026, you know, thinking through the decision strategically about which hockey rinks to close. Also, can we think about booster clubs for hockey? I mean, St. Paul has neighborhood teams, you know, neighbors that go out and they water the ice, and I bet people would step up if we gave them that opportunity. the ice, and I bet people would step up if we gave them that opportunity. And then, last but not least, my, my crazy idea of the night, maybe it'd be radical, but would be like a public plea for support and to tell our story that you've outlined so well today here in a more public forum, maybe it's, it's a 30-second TikTok video, just throwing that idea out there, that where we ask, you know, the billionaires of the world if, like Mackenzie Scott, would she just consider dropping $5 million with the park board?
There you go. And I did, I did my best to keep track of the order, so forgive me if I've gotten it wrong, but Commissioner Schaefer.
Thank you. Couple of ideas, just, I think we should think about working within the frameworks that we already have and going deeper. Number one, I think, is we've got to improve our relationship with the city council. Just like we have an annual meeting with the school board, we should have an annual meeting with the city council, and maybe it's twice a year. I think we need to begin to really inspire them to see themselves as partners in this work. It's our separate jurisdiction, but we need them as key cheerleaders, and of course, they invest a lot in our system already, but I think we need to develop this sense of ownership in them around our parks, because in reality, it is truth that when you look at cities our size, parks are what make us unique. And so for us to sit in our separate silos of jurisdiction and not celebrate that and drive that home in all of our marketing, in every aspect of our city, it's to our loss. And so I would really start with that, because I think then some of these annual discussions are by, you know, every two-year discussions might go smoothly, and we can get more support for that. Secondly, I think we should jumpstart something we just started as a board, our board, the Endowment. I think we should have a cash infusion initiative, a year-long, two-years-long. We have an eye for the long-range future, right? And so the Endowment is a key part of that, and so we can't just sit back and wait for that to unfold in its own timing. We need to have a very strategic initiative to jumpstart that, get that $10 million going right away. It's not going to help us immediately, but we know in five years, three years, four years, we're going to start to really have that cash infusion, and now is the time. We just, we just approved it. There has been, it's been a low-profile kind of laying in the weeds, you know, it's, it's time to really, you know, I know we've got the North Commons that they're working through, but it's, it's now that attention has to turn, and I just introduce, you know, Al, I was introducing you to someone last Saturday at the Kenwood event. I mean, people would have a high interest in this, and I think we need to really, you know, instead of looking for things, you know, pie in the sky, let's just work our, work our lanes that we got going already. And then, this is just an idea because it affects my district. Some of our parks really do butt up to other jurisdictions like St. Louis Park, Reserve Block 40. I think we need to maybe think about getting those communities on board with, even if it's just half-support or, again, developing partnerships in our ownership of some of those spaces so that we can co-manage some of those places that are maybe orphans or are highly utilized by a neighboring jurisdiction. And then, I think that was about it. Service levels, I feel, this is just a comment, I feel like with our ice rinks, et cetera, service hours, our service level adjustments have really fallen on the park user more than park staff, and I think we need to be sensitive to that going forward and figure out how we can demonstrate, and I don't know all the behind-the-scenes scenes, that might not be completely accurate, but I, I think we've got to be sensitive to that and, and because what we're taking away is pretty key to the community, and, and we don't want to create ill will. We want to build on the goodwill that we've had the last couple of years. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Menz.
Thanks. Yeah, I hear you, Commissioner Elber. It's been a while. That place, it's, it's just every year, there's something, so we need a plan no matter what. Field trips. I think that there is a huge market for us to do some experiential learning opportunities at the river, especially with the new Greco space, for not only field trips within the school district where they pay, but also other school districts around the metro. That would also allow our employees who are working full-time, you know, to, to have those times. I think it would bring real value, and I think it could be a real money-maker. I'm also very much in support of advertising on fields and on the hockey boards and those types of things. I think even our boards that we set up in the parks, we should consider that. And I hear Commissioner Musich that sometimes those things are an eyesore, but sometimes they're actually out of place when we don't have that. When we go to baseball games in the park board and there's no advertising on the field, it feels weird. That's not a space that is an athletic, a youth athletic facility. So those things kind of feel out of place too when we don't have that. Building more infrastructure for that consistency. It also allows local businesses to sort of get their word out and make sure that, that we're supporting those groups. Parking rates, I think we should double them immediately, whatever that budget would be. I think that when people park in our parking spaces, that they should feel a little burn. I mean, our parking rates are pretty low in the city, and, and you've heard me talk about Parade Ice Arena, where I think we should be charging users at our, at those regional facilities when they're coming, and if, if the state's not going to give us the regional funding that we need, then we need to try and figure out how to collect that funding from the citizens of the state in other ways. I also agree with Commissioner Elber. I don't know if we should be in the business of restoring historical assets all the time. I think that that's a difficult thing to justify. I think that I, I really liked hearing the history of the recreation centers becoming hubs, and I think that maybe we should be planning for that sort of scenario, but maybe not with like a super reduction of staffing, but more, thinking more strategically around the rec centers with, with cultural hubs or athletic hubs so that we're not having every rec center be everything for every community. I think that that's something that's happened in the past, that we, that citizens and constituents have that feeling that that's how it should be, but it can't be. We can't live in that reality where every rec center can be everything to every community. I think that's it. I think, oh, and maybe the bathroom facilities that don't open yet, maybe we could open them, maybe we could find some revenue via some sort of little like charge station, like a quarter or something, if you want to get in these, these, these places. They do it in Europe, they do it other places. I know that I would pay a quarter to go to the bathroom or some sort of little, you know, Bitcoin payment, because some of the bathroom facilities that we have are not open right now, even though they can be remotely unlocked and locked, and what I'm hearing is that we have a capacity issue. So I think that, you know, we got to think about those, those interesting things. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Forney.
It's a really dismal outcome we have here, our projection, I guess is what I'm saying. And I hear you all, and I think what we need to do is make sure the community knows this. I experienced when we almost lost the Board of Estimate Taxation, and the rallying cry was, if you get rid of the Board of Estimate Taxation, you get rid of the Independent Park Board, and the community responded. I can't remember what the percentage was, but it was a pretty high percentage of that vote that supported keeping it. Same thing with MPP 20. We really did an awesome job of publicizing just how important parks are, and we're sexy gang, I mean, really, we are. We can sell, well, as I've indicated, it's what the Downtown Council calls us, the irresistible vibe. Really, I just think that we really need to get out the word if it means that we need to create a, a private rallying group, lobbying group, whatever we want to call it. Really, if the community knew what is being proposed by the city as far as, you know, the levy requests, there would be such backlash. And in an election year, you know what? This is really important. So I, I really think that getting out the word is really important. All of us can do that. I mean, you know, we're, we're running for election, gang, let's use it, but that to me is probably the number one. The MIA, I know, has endowed one of their staff positions. I think that that's something that we should be doing. I believe that there's positions that really would appeal to somebody who's well-endowed with money, and I, I really think that that's something that, sorry. Did that come across wrong? I guess it did. Anyway, sorry. But, no, I really think that there is an appeal out there. We're very fortunate that we live in an incredibly philanthropic community, and to tap that resource, I think, is, is something that we possibly could do. And it just bugs the heck out of me that the airport sits on park board land and we're not getting a penny for it. I still think that we, that's something we should be looking at. Hey, they want to buy it. I don't know, something. I just feel that anything we can do to somehow get value out of that, because obviously the airport finds value in it. Do I have anything else? Those are probably my two biggest things. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Abeni. I agree with many of my colleagues and I disagree in places too. First of all, I completely agree, and Commissioner Forney, I also, it goes both ways, I forget. I forgot, I mean, I, I was regaling my son with the story of the airport just a few months ago, and I, like, yeah, we don't get a penny for math, and I do agree that that is a worthy pursuit. I also agree with Commissioner Schaefer that we need to do a better, we don't need to do a better job, we need better partners in general, and I think that maybe making a, an investment in time with meetings, which, you know, I don't want to be one of those, this, this meeting could have been an email kind of thing, but sometimes it's very important to start stewarding those relationships. I don't think that, like, historic levels of fiscal mismanagement should cause us to want to annex neighbors. I also agree that perhaps we could look into ads. I think of Boston, and I agree with Commissioner Menz that, you know, there's a lot of local businesses probably on the south side of Minneapolis and Richfield area and all that kind of stuff that would really love a boost from all of our adult, adult softball leagues. Niemann probably could get a lot too. And let's see, what else was there that I had written notes on? I think, I, I think that's it. I, I personally don't want to look too far afield of things that then we have to undo. I don't want to nickel-and-dime our residents with, like, going to the bathroom. Part of being a public institution is that we are to be stewards and shepherds of public funds with the idea that we are a public utility in our, in our totality. We steward the beautiful green spaces, we offer people a bathroom if you're on a bike ride, right, or, or, you know, out with your family. I, I think those are things we should make sure to protect. I, unlike some of my colleagues, which I respectfully disagree about our historic assets, I think we should, we, we, we get to be the stewards of that, and it fits with the idea that, that we also are, have Mia under our wing. I think it's totally understandable to have these historic things that also could be utilized for public school kids to visit. So, so my, I'm very much aligned with Commissioner Schaefer in the idea of like, let's try not to reinvent the wheel fully so much right now as to invest in what we already have. If parking has to go up, even though I don't like the idea, because a lot of it affects Northsiders driving to the lake, just being plain, so be it, but at least we're not like totally, I mean, I think of like a token booth to go to the bathroom is like hard pass, hard pass. Okay, that's it.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to give myself a turn, a turn before I call on second round of people, and I will say the Washington State Parks used to require quarters to be fed in while you're in the shower, and I will tell you, that is a very difficult thing to, to do while you're taking a shower. Anyway, okay, so I've got a couple of different things here. So one thing, and again, you know, I'm, I like all these ideas, and I'm sensitive to the idea of also nickel-and-diming or, you know, hitting the same, you know, the payers in our city with just a different form of tax, but I'm just going to throw this one on the table. We, we could seek to get part of the city's franchise fees to directly support the tree canopy. The city's already doing, they've already diverted some of their franchise fee money to the tune of, I think, $10 million a year for climate action-type things, and the tree canopy is direct carbon, or carbon sequestration, direct climate and adaptation work, and keeping it healthy is important for that. The other thing related to trees is that street trees, we know, struggle more than regular parkland trees, they have much shorter life cycles. It's really because of the impact of essentially the right-of-way, but one, one of the other impacts is really related to the conflicts of utilities, both over, above, overhead, below-ground utilities, and so possibly could there be a, a tree impact fee on, on permits issued by the city for utility work in the rights-of-way, regardless of whether or not there's a specific tree impact. That's a different thing, you know, to, you know, value a tree and charge for a tree. This would be on every single one, because all utility work ultimately will impact trees. Okay. The other one would be related to encroachments on parkland, and if you think about encroachments, we do charge based on land values and things like that, and upfront costs, land, a land, one-time land charge or whatever, but really what you have is whether it's something that's on the surface, below grade or above ground, you really are, have lost that space to other uses. It's a dedicated, permanent use to another, another function, and so this would be a question back to the staff to research. If we did collect or charge on an annual basis for that encroachment based on a loss of use, I don't know if that's legal in Minnesota, that happened in Washington, could that money be put toward maintenance or programs? The other thing is, you know, with the wonderful work that's been happened, happening around Diamond Sports, and really the idea of really trying to do, do these premier facilities, adding some, really perfecting others, some work around the scheduling that's occurred, there's a real opportunity here to model it more like the suburban model where they're more self-sustaining, and I know that the organization's talked about putting these types of facilities into enterprises, but I wonder if we could think about it a little bit differently? If we could think about maybe a seasonal enterprise? So it's not that you're trying to do a 365-day-a-year service of the place, but certainly during the, the season that the place serves, so, you know, you know, all the maintenance associated could be under this enterprise, you know, you're charging the fees to use the space, the rental fees and all of that. You may also be able to attract vendors if your scheduling gets tight enough that you could have back-to-back events, which we'd get proceeds for, and I'm hearing advertising, you know, you'd have the banners on the fencing or whatever, so maybe we could try looking again at an enterprise model for the premier-type places that we haven't been able to do that, just to relieve it as a maintenance item, a standalone maintenance item from the general fund. You know, I think we should look at, you know, in regard to the, the shared, the service level agreement with the city, giving back private property inspection responsibilities to the city, no more, no more inspecting diseased trees on private land. The city has regulatory authority over private properties. The park board doesn't really have that, and we should stay out of that, and we would retain our staff for our other purposes. I'm also hearing we have wood processing costs that are going up related to hauling farther and further away is what it sounds like. Again, the city's doing this biochar. I heard they're taking in private, private tree debris. We should, we should be the first point of, you know, use or whatever for their needs. I'm going to throw this one on the table because I want people to hate me, bike license fees. They used to be a thing in Minneapolis, maybe we could make some money on those. I have no idea about the administration of such a thing. And then this thing occurred to me while we were talking, I have no idea, but you know how we are a regional park system? Maybe, maybe the state should be approached to give all the regional parks a Maybe, maybe the state should be approached to give all the regional parks a little bit of money for maintaining parking lots and things in our regional parks from the, the state parking pass. I can't park anywhere on a state, in a state park without a state parking pass, and they are serious about it, and you park all over our parkland for free, or you pay the fee if you go to those. Maybe we get state parking pass money. Okay, that's all I have. Commissioner Olson, Olson was next.
Yeah, those are, those are good. Let's see here, so maybe this was complete, here's, I, I missed one, but I think I, I maybe heard that VT member Steve Brandt was maybe throwing out the idea of maybe moving to more of an income tax model. I don't know if we can do that in the city, just not possible? Okay. Okay, well, yeah, okay, well, maybe long-term, because it's, yeah, yeah, okay, well, because it's just, I mean, you know, property taxes are so aggressive, right? No, and so in this, you know, we kind of talk about how, and, and this kind of maybe ties in a little bit to President Abeni's kind of point of creating kind of seasonal, kind of like, you know, finding where in the market for like our, you know, certain sports, if we can really have premier facilities, make money off of that. You know, we talk about the loss of big, you know, events, like running events and like marathons, other things, and it, it kind of seems like we're kind of throwing up our hands in the air, even though we have this amazing asset. You know, maybe, you know, Shane Stenzel and team kind of come up with some sort of, you know, start to go out and solicit events and concerts and venues and parties and things, and we have this wonderful asset, and we know that, I know there are like security costs, security issues with that, maybe we look into, if we can pinpoint those and pinpoint ways to reduce those, but try to bring some of that back in. And I, I think that could be really effective, because, I mean, look at St. Paul, you know, obviously, they have that new, you know, concert series or, I can't even think, festival on like Raspberry Island or whatever like that, and that seems to be really effective to bring in a lot of people, and that is probably driving a lot of revenue through their, their park system. And so rather than throwing our hands in the air, let's be proactive about bringing that back and promoting that and the fact that we can do that. And then, you know, we're kind of talking about the rinks, you know, you know, inequitable way of doing that, it's, it'd probably be annoying for folks, and this would maybe create inefficiencies within our park system, but maybe, you know, one year this ring's open, next year this one's open, and we kind of have a rotation, if that's really how we're gonna be doing things. And we didn't really get into like things we want to protect or cut or whatever, and maybe we stay away from that. I just know personally, I, I really think the youth programming and the youth positions and maintaining that, and we were sounding like, yeah, I'd, I'd rather move towards less of the tree pruning and the mowing, mowing and things like that, and kind of save the, the cuts that would affect, you know, youth interaction and engagement and activation and our, you know, actual people engaging in our parks for later, if we're talking about prioritization. I'd also say with the, the equity, the system equity investment in Greco and Upper Harbor, I mean, if, if we can't, if we're running into these issues, I think we just can't expand, right? And we just, and we just have to hit pause. And if it's, and if it looks bad to have a building sitting empty or whatever, like, we just have to, we just have to bear that. But to, to cut elsewhere, where services that people rely on to create kind of, you know, people aren't currently, we know that there's maybe an emptiness there, and there's a void there that, that needs to be filled, but people aren't feeling necessarily the pain as much of not having that potential thing. So I would just encourage that, that be another one of the first things that we look at if we really have to tighten our belt, so.
Thank you for that, and we'll have a round two of these, this workshop or this budget meetings, and we'll have an opportunity, I think, to talk more about what we want to protect, but I appreciate your comments there. And I would also say that, I just would say that all the things that I think that have been opened or are opening, really were things that were in the works when we started as commissioners, so we just kept them going. Commissioner Menz?
Yeah, thank you for letting me speak. Again, I did forget, so, you know, maybe looking at closing Fort Nellin Golf Course, I know that's a money loser and probably not a very popular golf course, and it also speaks to that, the idea that I've heard a couple of times around Neiman Sports Complex. We have a lease there that, that tells us we're supposed to build a something, like a clubhouse. So maybe looking at really renegotiating that lease and maybe looking at sort of the airport, possibility of an airport fee. It seems like we need to look at, look at how that facility could, could make us more money. I like the idea of somebody mentioning that, putting it in the enterprise fund, I think that's a really creative idea to think about it as a seasonal thing. But those, those facilities can make us a lot of money, but they're not permitted enough. So if we can get those back-to-backs, there, there is a dearth, there's a dearth out there for, for facility space. And last thing, I don't know if this will save us money, but I, I think that Rec Plus and Minneapolis Kids, I know that we've talked about Rec Plus capacity, I really feel like Rec Plus could be the, the childcare provider for both public school and park board. And I don't know how we work with our school district partners to convince them of that, or if we have the capacity, but I think that that could be a real revenue generator, or at least, you know, streamline some services, which the school district also has their own large budget, budget problems. Also, golf simulators did, did really well. For those of you who don't know, I've heard that the golf simulators at Columbia Golf Course are actually making a lot of money. So that's a revenue bonus, and maybe there's other, other ways to look at that. And, and I don't really want to charge for bathrooms, those are, that is a creative idea, but I would like to charge for bathrooms between April 1st and March 20th, May 24th, because right now we don't have facilities there people can stop and get in the bathroom unless they go to a BIF that looks like crap and is not accountable to us really.
Okay. Commissioner Elper?
Yeah, thanks. I just have a couple additional comments. I wanted to say first, first of all, excellent idea, President Abeni, about just why are we in the diseased tree business on private property? It makes people upset with us, people are intensely unhappy, we've all experienced it, and I think, yeah, let's, let's, let's get rid of that. That sounds great. Excellent. Regarding empty buildings, I wanted to say just that, have we thought about getting, using them, like contracting with an event company? They could be wedding venues, you know, just, just thinking, like, kind of, maybe, maybe that way it isn't empty, but that way it could be, be a revenue generator. And then last but not least, we, we have all these properties that, you know, you looked at the, the map that was shown today that are not in Minneapolis. And, you know, even, I'm not suggesting that we get rid of them, but just saying that, you know, even Theodore Wirth Park, it, it, who does it benefit? It benefits some residents of Minneapolis who live nearby, it benefits people who visit there, but it's right next to, oh my gosh, Golden Valley. Thank you, thank you. It's in, it's in Golden Valley, yes, thank you. Exactly. So what is Golden Valley contributing towards Theodore Wirth? Or what is Bloomington contributing towards Fort Snelling Golf Course, you know? So I just, I think, or what's the other one in, oh my gosh, well, this is not Meadowbrook, you know? St. Anthony, gross, thank you. Thank you, thank you all. Yes, we have many examples. So I think those are cases where, in terms of partnerships, I, I think it makes sense why it's an immediate benefit to residents of neighboring jurisdictions and they can help out.
Okay. Okay, I think that, that was a lot. And I think Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't see any other lights, so Deputy Superintendent Ringel, do you have everything you need right now?
I do, thank you very much. I will leave you with, just to kind of think about this pyramid a little bit, so in the world of park and recreation, we commonly will use something called a cost recovery model. And the concept is that on some things, maybe bathrooms, maybe not, maybe bathrooms certain times a year, they are, they are provided to the public at no cost and essentially subsidized by the, by the public, right? And then on the other side of it, and this might get into some of our seasonal high use athletic fields, you might have high individual benefit, and you actually look at a cost recovery model there of like 125 to 140%, right? So you, so there are some things that we realize that the user demands so high that they will be willing to pay above, say, the cost of actually producing it, they'll be able to provide more. Parking might be a great example of that as well. And on the other end, you have good, you have public good, essentially you've got public good, what we, which we provide. I think we're gonna talk about this a lot during the budget piece, this might be a framework that we use to try to think about those things that fit into the high individual versus what we think of as the public good. So I leave you with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then on our agenda, we have closing marks from the superintendent as our last item. And we're pretty much, we're within four minutes of our agenda, so whoever wrote the agenda, nice work.
Yes, we're good, we're efficient. President Abeni, thank you so much, and Commissioners, I'd just be really brief, and I was thinking about what to say at the end of all this, because I know it's very challenging. This is a very challenging budget, there's no question. When I first started the introduction to it, I was, I knew what was coming, right? We had to get through it to kind of talk about it. But what I do recognize is that this park board, you can't hide what we, who we are, right? And what I've always said too is when you're in a park and you're walking on the trails and you're sitting under a tree, or you're playing pickleball, or you're at the beach, or you're on a basketball court, or you're at one of our rec centers, or you're in the nature preserve areas, you're on the trails, I can go on and on, you can't hide it. And, and that's the thing that I always say is that what we do as an organization, I hope this what it showed in this presentation to this board and to this community, is that this, this organization is efficient. We are very thoughtful about, we spend a taxpayer dollar. We, we look at our investments, we're very clear about that, and I think, and if I'm still correct, I think we're eight cents on the dollar, right? And if you look at the value of that for our residents, it's incredible. We're the, one of the best things, and Council Rice talks about this, our regional park system, what is it, $1? Brian, we talk about like $2? A visit, this is our park system. And I'm hoping that our residents will understand and understand that this is a city within a park, and this park system is one of the best in the country for a reason. We always score high in TPL, we always become, we always get, you know, claims about how amazing this park system is, and so I really hope that our residents understand the work that we do, these wonderful people behind it, all the people that work every day in our park system to keep it what it is for our residents of Minneapolis. And I know it's gonna be a challenge, and I'm grateful for this board and the discussion we just had, and the wonderful ideas that have been put up here. I think that we have a lot of work to do. We see what's coming, we understand it, we know it. And we're gonna work hard to continue to broaden the services for our residents, but it's gonna take a lot of work, it's gonna take a lot of communication, working with our city. I appreciate what Commissioner Schaefer said, working with our city council members to really understand, this city is what it is, and the livability of it, the health of it is because of this park system. I truly believe that. It's what makes it great. So with that, I wanted to say thank you to this board. Our next board meeting is May 28th, or budget retreat, yes, not board, budget retreat, May 28th, and we'll continue this discussion. Thank you so much for all your efforts and your work today, and thank you to our staff, but I look forward to our future work together to really balance this budget, but thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you Superintendent Van Gora, and thank you very much to the sta, your team, you're awesome. And with, without objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned.